Seats seven, eight, nine seats up front if anybody wants to sit down. All right, good morning, everyone. I would like to welcome all of you to the ESC building and thank you for coming to this informational and open enrollment meeting. I want to just begin thanking a few people. I want to recognize all the hard work that my assistant Stephanie Wasson has done in the past three weeks to get ready for today. Stephanie, thank you. And I would also like to recognize Christine Carlson, our benefits specialist, who was always at Stephanie's side, working on all of this as well. Thank you, Christine. And finally, please. We work very tirelessly to make sure this works out very well for you. And finally, I would like to thank David Kroc, who represents AFG, who has been instrumental in helping to make these changes to your benefit for the district's employees and retirees. So David, thank you so much. I would also like to thank both Dean and Mercy representatives for being here today and tomorrow, all day today and all tomorrow night. So thank you so much for working away from your office. I know how hard that can be because what waits you is probably 2,000 emails when you return. So thank you so much. I want to at least tell you a little bit about the protocol for this morning. And for those of you who are listening and streaming, if you're coming to another meeting, this is how the meetings run. We will have a short presentation, formal presentation, by both Mercy and Dean. And then we can follow that up with very general questions from the audience. If you have a general question that might apply to the larger group, this would be a good time to ask that question. Afterwards, we will then have time for you to speak privately to your specific questions with either a Mercy and/or a Dean representative. And as you can see throughout the room, we have tables set up that would have a Mercy or a Dean representative. You do not have to choose to speak only to Mercy or only to Dean. This is your opportunity to gather information so you make a wise decision as to what works best for you. So please, speak to both representatives. If you are ready to fill out your open enrollment form, we do have those available for you. Stephanie Wasson has them at her desk. And we do have places, a few places out in the hallway for you to fill those out. You can also go next door to our lounge and fill out your enrollment forms today if you're ready to do that. If not, take an enrollment form with you and then make sure that it returns back to our office by May 15th. There are four copies, you know, four copies to your enrollment form, so please make sure you print pretty deeply onto those copies. I will now hand this over to our representatives. I have Josh Mummery here from Dean. I'm sorry for Mercy. That's points taken off. No intentions, no intentions here. And Kim Carter from Dean. Thank you both very much.
Thank you. We're very excited to be here. Thanks for having us. I'm Josh Mummery. I'm the sales supervisor for Mercy Care Health Plans. I will introduce our team. We have Dwayne Severson. He's the director of sales. Sherry Sargent, she's our senior sales rep. We have Brenda Bart. She's our medical manager. And then we have Patty Hayes from customer service. Mercy Care Health Plans, we're an integrated partner with Mercy Health System. So anyone who is on the Alliance EPO plan, just a reminder, if you want to keep your Mercy doctors, you can just sign up for the Mercy Care Health Plan. Mercy Health Systems are recipient of the Milken Baldrich National Quality Award. That's the highest honor for quality to any organization in the country. Just recently, the Health System also was a magnet recognition of the American Nursing Credentialing Center in 2014. This recognition is considered the highest honor in the country given to a healthcare organization for nursing excellence. Mercy Care Health Plans is an NCQA accreditation and we have been for the last 15 years. We're one of the largest HMO providers in Rock County. We have an open access network. So what that means is you do not need a referral to see any in-network provider or specialist. You can just see any Mercy Health System physician without a referral from your primary care physician. We have a comprehensive wellness program of $200. We call it our Stay Healthy Benefit. So anyone who is on the plan who's 18 years or older can get reimbursed for fitness and wellness programs. So if you have a gym membership, you can turn in that receipt and get reimbursed. Zumba classes, weight loss programs, anything that is fitness and wellness, we reimburse you in cash. I think one of the great things about Mercy Care Health Plans is we are local. We have a dedicated Janesville staff. We're actually just right down the street, right next to the hospital in Janesville. We're at the Mercy Care Building. The address is 580 North Washington Street. Mercy Care is in there. Our billing department's in there. Our claims department's in there. So anytime you have questions or concerns and you actually want to sit down with someone face to face, we have somebody that is always dedicated to meet with you. So more information on Mercy Care Health Plans, we serve four counties. We're in Rock, Walworth, Green, and Jefferson County. We have over 400 contracted physicians and over 80 specialty services. We have five hospitals. We have a hospital in Janesville. We have a hospital in Walworth County in Lake Geneva. Hospital in Harvard, Illinois. And then we also contract with Ford Atkinson Hospital and Watertown Hospital in Jefferson County. We have 70 facilities in 24 communities. So specifically around Rock and Walworth County, you'll see a Mercy facility in almost every city. We have local pharmacies and a national pharmacy network. So that means you can, you're not required to get your prescriptions filled at a Mercy pharmacy. You can, but you can get it filled at any pharmacy across the country. So here's a map, just shows you all of our facilities. So you can see we're scattered all through Rock, Walworth, McHenry, and Jefferson County. I guess just we'll touch on, we also have an exclusive referral with UW. So anytime you have a service or a specialty that cannot be handled within our network, we do have an exclusive referral with UW. So you would be referred to UW and then that would be covered as an in-network benefit. Anytime you're traveling or on vacation outside our service area, you always can go to the emergency room in urgent care and you'd be covered. And then you'd be covered till you're stable to be released and then follow-up treatment would then just have to come back within network. You can go to our website at Mercy Care Health Plan, or, oh, okay, this is Mercy Care My Plan. This is access to your insurance online. It's 24/7 access. It's mercycaremyplan.com. On here, you can look at the details of your insurance. You can see how much of your deductible's been met. You can view explanation of benefits. If you want to chat with our customer service department, you can do that. If you lose your insurance card, you can request a new card. So this is just an online portal with all your insurance information that you can access at any time. The next slide's on our health line. This is through Mercy Health System. Okay, this is the health line. This is our 24 hours a day, seven day a week nurse hotline. So what this is, you can call a nurse if you've got questions on any medical condition. If you're not sure if you want to go to the urgent care, or if you just want to call a nurse, you can call this number and you can access a nurse at no cost to you at any time. We also have information on our health education classes and screenings and seminars that Mercy Health System has. So this is a good resource for you at, you know, to chat with a nurse at any time. All right, this is the slide I thought it was. This is our website, mercycarehealthplans.com. A lot of this information will be in the packets that are scattered around too. But on here, you can find a provider. You can view your benefit summaries, view your schedule of benefits. You can view our RX formulary. Anytime, we have an HRA, Health Risk Assessment, that you can take off our website. We have more information such as Healthy Living Magazine. So this would be the access where you can search for a provider. You just go on there, find a doctor. You can search for a physician through facility, specialty locations, really easy to navigate through. And then if you want to find out what prescriptions fall in what tier, you can do that on our website as well. So I know Mercy Care is offering three different plans. We have an HMO plan and then we got a point of service plan. So anyone who lives in our service area would be eligible for one of those two plans. And then there's a PPO plan also available for anyone who would live outside our and Dean's service area, which we can meet one-on-one and go over those details with you more.
I'm Kim Carter and welcome. I know insurance is a riveting topic, so I hope you have all your questions answered today before you leave. Today with me, I have Colleen, Jason, and Rebecca, and they are all part of the sales team at Dean Health Plan. I'll go over our little PowerPoint here for you and then we'll get on to the questions that you have. Dean Health Plan, we're located in Madison. We are an integrated healthcare system, so we are all integrated with the clinics and the hospitals and our doctors. We all stay connected and that's how we deliver the best care to you throughout our whole system. We have received the excellent accreditation since 2000, the NCQ Excellent Accreditation, so we're very proud of that award. As far as access to providers, we have more than 2,000 providers available to you. 28 planned hospitals and more, 200 primary care sites in over 20 counties. So that, all that network is available to you through Dean Health Plan. As far as care management, anytime that you have any conditions going on, we do have a care management team that is involved in your care to make sure that you navigate through the system and that you have all your questions answered, that you go to the right doctor. We are a self-referred HMO, the same thing. You can pick any doctor that you want to go to, but if you're anywhere in the network, you can just go. You don't need a referral from your doctor. The only time you need a referral from a Dean provider, primary care doctor, is if we're referring you out of our network to have services that we can't cover in-network. A referral pattern is also UW for transplants, for child oncology and things like that. Those are case-by-case basis, whether you refer to UW, but we do review all those circumstances for you. As far as our healthy living rewards, well, I also wanted to mention two emergencies. If you're anywhere, traveling anywhere outside our service area, if you're on the HMO or point of service, if it's an emergency or urgent care situation, it is covered as in-plan, whether you're out of the state of Wisconsin, out of the country. So that's all covered as an emergency or urgent care coded benefit. As far as our wellness, we have a healthy living program for the, we have this set up specifically for teachers and school districts. You go online and fill out a health risk assessment, a biometrics health risk assessment, and you automatically get $150. That does then encourage you to do some different trackings for your wellness and some different things to stay on top of your wellness, but that is a benefit that you can actually do right when you become effective with Dean Health Plan. And those are paid out in our Visa cards, Visa gift cards. So that's how you get the payment for that. And it's on your honor and there's nothing else you have to produce for that. As far as technology and innovation, we have MyChart, which is a tool that you use through your clinics. That's where you can make all your appointments and do everything with your doctors through MyChart. If you've never used that, it's a very useful tool. It's a great way to communicate with your doctor. And then Dean Connect. Dean Connect is where you would go online. You can track all your deductibles, order new ID cards, see wherever, you know, where you are as far as meeting your deductible, where your claims are in process. All of those things can be done through Dean Connect. At the end of the slides, we've also provided a specific email address, or a website created just for the Janesville School District teachers. So that's very comprehensive information out there for you. I encourage you to see, when you see that website, to make sure that you go out and take a look at everything that's on there for you. This is just states how many, as far as a membership, what we look like. So plan members, we have over 400,000 members in our current Dean Health Plan. And if you're just looking at Rock County, we have over 18,000 members just in Rock County alone. As far as our pharmacies, we have over 325 planned pharmacies that are just in our service area, but over 60,000 national pharmacies. So again, it's pretty hard to find a pharmacy that's not in-network also. This is a map of our service area. You do have that map in a packet of information if you choose the Dean packet and want to review that. On the back of that map, everything is listed out by location. So each one of those counties will then have all the locations of their providers in those counties. So it's very useful for you to see like how that will play out. We do base most of all of our services off the provider location. So if a provider is giving you services out of that location, it's going to be covered as a Dean Health Plan provider. Our St. Hospital in Madison is St. Mary's, and then of course, St. Mary's in Janesville. So again, UW would be on a referral basis only. We'll be offering the HMO, the point of service, which offers you in-plan and non-plan benefits, and also the PPO. Again, this map is where you determine on the PPO, if you live outside any of those counties for us or for Mercy, that's when you could come and talk to us personally and we can discuss how that PPO option would work for you. This was just, again, another snapshot of some of the local area, in-plan facilities, just in your surrounding area here. The member guide is something that will be sent to you once you enroll with Dean. It's called the Notables Member Guide. And it'll give you, start to finish, things that you should do to transition, easy transition into the healthcare system. Rebecca and I will always be available and you'll have our name and then that website that you can contact before and when you're making any types of decisions. Once you're enrolled with a plan, then you'll be directing your calls to customer service. But this member guide will also help you get through the whole process. But at any time, if you have any questions or concerns or are confused about anything, please don't hesitate to ask. The more communication we get from you, the more we can assure that your transition will be smooth into the Dean Health Plan. Call customer service at any time. Right now, they have the basic benefits that they could answer for you. They can answer pharmacy questions and they can answer provider questions, as well as Rebecca and I also, as far as a point of contact. You can visit our offices. We are located on the west side of Madison and then we do have representatives in our offices and in our clinics in Madison. We have customer service local in Madison, right on the west side also. So anytime that you need anything, you could certainly visit us there. Dean on Call is a 1-800-NURSE-HOTLINE that will be, that number's on the back of your ID card. So anytime that you want to access that, they, it's a great service if maybe middle of the night and you don't want to run to the emergency room, here's my, here's what's going on, and they'll give you some advice on what they think that you should do. Of course, they're not going to, they're always going to give advice to make sure that you're healthy and not taking a chance, but it's a great service to use. Again, this is who you need to contact. My name is Kim Carter. Rebecca Hefti then is also the other contact. And you'll see there that that's deancare.com and then health insurance Janesville. And that has a lot of information specific to you and to your plan and what you need to do from a standpoint of a smooth transition. One other thing I did want to mention, if anybody has any full-time students that live outside of that service area for Dean that we showed you, we do have a full-time student benefit that we allow you to sign up for, for those students so that they would have access to in-plan benefits besides the urgent and emergency care. So if that's something that pertains to any of you, please see one of us after if you're choosing the Dean Health Plan. And then if you, anybody has ongoing treatments that they feel like they want to understand how that transition of care would work, then please see us for that also. Thank you.
I just want to make one clarification, that the PPO is available for early retirees only. It is not an option for our active employees. So active employees can choose from the HMO or from the POS or point of service. At this time, if there are any questions, we'd be more than happy to take general questions. Speak loudly though.
For early retirees only, you would have to live out of, say, Rock County?
I'll come to the Dean and Mercy service area.
Okay. I just want to be clear.
So the question was, early retiree has to live out of the service area in order to sign up for the PPO? And that answer is yes.
I have a question on their enrollment application. Where it's asking for this spouse information. First question, it asks if they're eligible for a permanent license plan. Then it asks about your dependents. It asks about your spouse working in Geneva. And it says, and then it said if yes, which is why it's working in April. Complete their employer name and address.
Yes, thank you very much. The question was, the information needed on the application forms regarding spouse and dependents. This is the first year that we are applying a spousal surcharge to the premiums. That will be applicable to all of our active employees beginning July 1. However, early retirees would not be subject to the spousal surcharge at this time. Early retirees who retire in the 2015, 2016 school year would begin to pay a surcharge. We would however, if there is not a place up at the top that says "early retiree," if you could just write that down on the top, if you are filling out this application for "early retiree." And I believe there is a spot there already, so just mark X. Please still fill out all of the information. However, we will know if you're an early retiree that we would not be paying as close attention to the spousal surcharge information. That was one typo, yes. And it should just be group health insurance.
So we, as early retirees, we don't use the other spousal?
That is correct. Yes.
When we enroll, say I'm changing from what I have to a different one, when does the current?
Sure. The current plans begin July 1 of this year. So we, you must have your application in by May 15th. And then we will be able to give those applications to Mercy and to Dean. And from that point on, I believe you will be sending out the package, the welcoming packages and everything else that goes to you.
Anytime I go to the doctor after July 1st, it'll be the new?
Yes, anytime you go to the doctor after July 1st, it's the new plan. It's the Mercy or the Dean plan. Thank you. And you will have your ID cards in the mail by then. And I have a question in the back.
On the health risk assessment, in the past, we've had to go in and have blood taken and so on. Am I to understand that now it's whichever plan you go with, it's just online?
And I will turn that over.
This is a health risk assessment.
For the health risk assessments, what we have online is just a tool for you to use. There may still be through the school district, some different programs that do the biometric screenings, which is what you're talking about, where they ask you to come in and they do the blood draw and they do all that. But the health risk assessment will be a separate tool from that that you can access on your own through our website. So that will be separate.
And for ours, well, it's just an additional tool for you to use. If you do get the biometric screenings, you will get a more accurate result, but they're not required to do the health risk assessment.
Question over there.
Drug coverage, is it the same for both platforms or does it vary?
The question was drug coverage. Is it the same platform for both plans?
The drug coverage was designed the same way, so it's 20%, 20% of the benefit. That now will be a little bit different is that it's going to be, or in 2016, it would apply to a major maximum out of pocket. The formulary drug listings will be different. So you might want to go on to either Dean or Mercy and look at where, what tier your prescriptions are falling under, but again, you're paying the 20% for them. So at this point, you actually could become a little, a consumer of that and you could check the different discounts that you get at the various pharmacies, either Dean or Mercy. And if, as long as you're, because you're paying that 20%, you could actually find yourself maybe paying a little less or however that works out. But the two formularies will not be exactly the same between both of us.
Drug's the same. In other words, could you have one provider provide coverage for one drug and the other one not?
Well, if you're with the Dean, Dean's providers are going to be prescribing drugs for you that are on our formulary listing. So if you're taking a drug right now, you do want to look at either listing. And if you have those names, we can look those up for you and see what, where they fall on the listing and what tier they fall on, so that you'd be informed on that.
And regarding the benefits, there are two different drug benefits depending on when you retired. So if you retired after 7/1/13, you'd have a three-tier copay plan. If you retired before 7/1/13, then it would be the 80% coverage.
They already know our plans. It's great. Thank you. I'm going to go to the back of the room real quick. Yes?
If you choose the Dean plan, do you have to go to the Dean pharmacies or can you go to any pharmacy you want?
And I'll make that question to both, if you are at Dean or Mercy. Mercy, do you have a pharmacy?
We do have a pharmacy. If you want to receive, utilize our mail order program, it has to be through a Mercy pharmacy. But if you just want to get any prescription filled, you can go to any pharmacy.
The same with Dean. We have over 60,000 national pharmacies and then over, you know, 1,400 local pharmacies. We have Dean pharmacies in our clinic, but you're not required to use that pharmacy. So, and it doesn't matter where you get your prescription from. As long as you take it to an in-plan pharmacy with Dean, then it's going to be covered at your benefit level. So, you know, that could, I mean, that's Walmart, CVS, you know, CVS, Shopko's, you know, Targets, all of that, so.
And there was one more in the back.
Previously at Mercy, with Mercy Care, you could go to urgent care, so if my college student is from across, is that, you can only go to emergency rooms? Is that, that still a factor? Or could she go to urgent, like has Dean said that they could go to urgent care or emergency room?
Are you referring just to college students or?
Probably for anybody if we're on vacation or something.
All right. So this question has to do with if you're out of the network for whatever reasons, maybe on a vacation, how does that work with urgent care and such?
Yeah, anytime you're outside our service area, you can go, you have the option to go to the urgent care or the ER.
I was told last, in the last time, like my daughter, he had some problems and she would have had to come all the way home for a strep throat or something. And that's me, it wasn't strep, something minor.
Yeah, she wouldn't be able to go see a primary care physician or an actual, you know.
Right. But she could go to urgent care.
She can, yes.
And that is the same for Dean. So again, anytime they're out of the service area. And then we do have coverage for the college students if that's a factor for one of you.
And a question here.
My husband is on Medicare, but he has the supplementary insurance through the Janesville schools because I was employed. How is that going to be affected by either one?
So the question has to do with early retirees and Medicare. You're an early retiree?
Yes, but my spouse has got.
Correct, the dependent.
I guess I'm not aware of what your extra benefit that they offer.
Right, if you're an early retiree and this is an early retire, this is a retirement plan, I'm going to ask David, do you want to speak to that?
Oh, the Medicare supplement is, thank you.
So if, let me clarify the question. The question is, if my spouse is on Medicare with a supplement, is there any benefit to enroll in Mercy or Dean? Is that the question? The coverage that he's currently?
I'm not on either one of these at this point.
Yeah, if, if he's currently covered under that supplement that's provided through, I believe it's SACID, through the district? Or is he, or is he enrolled in the self-funded health plan?
I think it was a self-funded health plan.
So, does he, does he, why don't you, why don't we go to this personal question there? That's too complex for the group.
Well, okay.
So a dependent of a retiree, if you're on Medicare A and B and you're over 65, I believe that you're not eligible for the district's plan?
No, if they still have a dependent.
Okay.
If their spouse is an employee or the retiree.
If the spouse is the early retiree, but your spouse is Medicare eligible. Because this is a retirement plan now, they would have to have A and B. But what happens then is the Dean or Mercy plan actually then becomes a supplemental plan for them. Does that help answer that question?
Yeah.
Okay. For active employees however, active employees, if your spouse is on Medicare for whatever reason, you would not be required to have your spouse sign up for Part B. And neither spouse has to sign up for any additional Part D at all because the Mercy and the Dean plan would be your Part D. Does that make some sense? I hope so. I know Medicare is its own animal, that's for sure. We have two more questions. I'm going to go way in the back and then I'll come forward.
Okay, and this is for Dean. We were sent this schedule from the school district, some copays and different things on it. I was looking in the back of this, and it has these white sheets that list some copays or things that are different. And I'm wondering which one applies to us?
I think we'll talk on that as a separate case. So please just find a Dean representative after this. So please just find a Dean representative after this. And we had another question. Yes, please.
I want to go back to the Medicare question.
Yes, Medicare question.
If I'm on Medicare, if I'm on Medicare and my husband's an early retiree, so just to make sure, so I would, my Medicare, if I go to the hospital or doctor, my Medicare would cover, that'd be my primary? And then he would be my, so I would be?
That is correct. Medicare is primary for you. And then, of course, the Dean or the Mercy plan would then be your supplement or your secondary.
I have another question. If I was going, I go to Mercy, but I also go to UW Madison, so would I have two deductibles, one with each?
That would be?
Deductible question.
Well, I guess it wouldn't matter what plan you selected. If you selected the HMO plan, Medicare's going to be primary, or HMO would be secondary, so you would just have that deductible through the in-network benefit. If it was, you went to UW because of a referral through Mercy?
No, I, I go to UW Madison.
Okay.
So I'm already there.
Okay. We can talk one-on-one after.
I just wanted to make a comment for anybody who has some concerns.
Hi, I just wanted to make a comment regarding prescriptions for anybody who has some concerns or questions. I can speak from experience that when I get some medications filled, it's cheaper for me if I get the actual brand name, whereas sometimes it's cheaper if you get the generic. So if you're going to be speaking to Mercy and Dean, I would ask that question of both of them for your medications, which one you are to get. Just a little hint.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, please.
This is a question for you, I hope it's okay, but you spoke to early retirees as of 2015 applying the supplement, because I was under the assumption, I thought that my husband retired the spring of 2014, and I thought that would apply to sup, this added.
The surcharge would not apply.
Hallelujah. Thank you.
Yes.
A question about filling out the form under spouse information. My wife's actually the carrier.
Active or retiree?
Retiree before the, back in the dark ages. So under spouse information, there's all these questions about whether or not I'm eligible.
Yes, if you mark "early retiree" at the top, you wouldn't necessarily have to answer those questions as, am, do I have outside insurance?
You already.
Yes, I assume right away when I see "early retiree" that the spousal surcharge would not affect.
Okay, well, that's not my question. The question is just how to fill this out. You know, it asks, under the spouse information, there's a block of questions about insurance coverage. In terms of insurance plan, no, but then there's a question about Medicare coverage, yes. So if we just check yes, is that all we have to do?
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay, I'm just getting down to the Medicare. What's the difference between HMO and POS?
Okay, great question. What's the difference between an HMO and a POS, which is Point of Service? So that's primary information. I'll do my best, and then I'll have either Dean or Mercy help out. HMO is a narrower network, if you will. So you, if you have the HMO, you know that you have the advantage of a lower deductible, but your choices are more limited. You have to stay within those networks for your services unless it's an emergency, or in those few cases, perhaps, if you're referred out. And if so, then it is covered as if it were network. However, if you go out of an HMO network without it being an emergency or without it being a referral, that cost is yours to bear fully. A Point of Service is a more extended network. First of all, within the network, if you wanted to go see a specialist, let's say for perhaps a dermatologist, you could do so without a referral from a primary doctor. So you have latitude within the network itself. Also, if you go out of the network with a Point of Service without a referral or without it being an emergency, the entire cost would not be your liability. You would be paying a higher co-insurance, because it would be at a 60-40% co-insurance, but at least it would not be entirely yours. Pretty much it? All right.
Mr. Clerk, go ahead.
Can you clarify, HMO, if you wanted to go to a dermatologist within that, you still had to get a referral?
Dean is saying you do not need a referral if you're on an HMO, if you are going within the network to a specialist. Mercy, is that correct for you? And that's correct for Mercy. So both of those, in the HMO and the Point of Service, you can move within the network without referrals. Okay, was there another question in the back? Okay, great.
Would all costs for the Point of Service are more?
All costs for the Point of Service is more, it's an 80-20 co-insurance.
20 for the?
For the Point of Service.
60 for the boarding?
For out of network. For out of network. So what are you paying for? You're paying for, first of all, the possibility that you may choose an out-of-network doctor on your own. And also, it provides you with more latitude, of course, within the network.
Okay, we choose now, this year, is there any point in time when we go, oh, wait, I have, I have to just, there's a way to change?
The question was, do I, once I pick today for next school year, as I always say, or next plan year, is that my choice forever, for the most part? No, we have open enrollment every year. So every year, you can make a choice between the two plans. Now, maybe your, maybe your needs change. Or maybe you don't necessarily change from Mercy to Dean, but you change from an HMO to a Point of Service. That could all be done at the time of an open enrollment. But it can also be done if there is a qualifying event in your life. And those are usually, of course, birth of a child, marriage, other things that change your status. All right.
Someone explained that he sees procedures, people transfer from one service to the other, so from Mercy to Dean, how you get records transferred, simplest way doing that, that was a fear of a lot.
So the question has to do with if you're currently at Mercy, let's say, or wherever, and you want, you're transferring, if you were at Dean and you're transferring the next year to Mercy or vice versa, how, what is the process for transferring those files?
If you're transferring from one to the other for Dean, what you do is, is make that first appointment with your primary care physician. So it's, we like you to establish yourself with a primary care physician. That doctor will really be in charge of the care, your general care, and any future care you need. You don't need a referral to see a dermatologist, and you might have a separate OB-GYN and things like that. But if there's stuff going on with your care, he's the one that might direct you to a specialist for maybe a stomach issue or some different things like that. Your primary care physician can be a family doctor, it can be an internal medicine doctor, you can, you can have a primary care physician in different levels. And then we will establish yourself with that doctor, make that first appointment, and the nurse will help you transition all those records. She'll give you the required forms. In that member guide that we send you when you get enrolled with us, you'll first get a member welcome letter. That'll have your member number on it, and that means you're in our system and you have access to all the information regarding your plan, your certificate, everything. You are enrolled. Then that member guide will outline all the different steps you need to take to make sure that you have that smooth transition. What do I do with my medical records? What do I check on for my prescriptions? The good thing about this is that you're going to be getting your ID cards the second week in June, and you're not effective until July 1. So the minute you get your ID cards, you can start making those appointments, and you'll have that like three-week span in there where you really can get everything set. You know, a lot of employers kind of go down to the wire and they don't get their ID cards till the middle of the month when they're already effective. So you guys are really in a good position for all this. But, and anytime that you have any questions on whether or not that's working or it's not happening, we can certainly help you out with that also. But usually, it will be the clinic nurse, and they will tell you how to do it. Some of the MyChart stuff sometimes can be electronically transferred, it just depends on where you're set up in the system.
So for us, it works pretty similar. You would have to establish with a primary care physician. Between them and the nurses, you would have to get a consent form filled out, and then we could work on getting those medical records transitioned over. And again, at any time, you can always call our customer service department or meet some, with somebody locally, and we can help with that transition as well.
Could you contact Dean and request the record sent to you?
If you've established with, if you've established with a network provider, they will help you. You can, they have consent forms that you can sign there right at the office, and they'll help you get those records sent to them.
If July 1 is the day this all kicks in, is that the day new deductibles start?
July 1 is the day it kicks in, and new deductibles would start usually, except for this particular year. This particular year, you have a much longer deductible year because we are giving credit, if you will, for all, all of your deductible met from January 1 of 2015 onward. So it's almost an 18-month, it is an 18-month deductible year. So it'll run from January 2015 all the way to June 30, 2016. So if you've met your deductible already from, I believe, January 1 on, you would not have to remet a deductible.
What about your out-of-pocket?
Let me just add to process. We'll be requesting of PBA, the current administrator, a deductible and co-insurance report. That will be requested in late June. If you have a claim in, that hasn't been processed, it's not going to show up on that report, right? We're asking for another report from them, probably in August, to refresh that information. Ultimately, if it doesn't show up on one of those reports, you can send your most recent explanation of benefits, EOB, to your respective carrier, the carrier that you've chosen, and they will credit the deductible and co-insurance. Again, that co-insurance credit, you're currently on a calendar year basis. So from, if you've met deductible or co-insurance, you should get credit, and that credit will go until July 1 or June 30, 30th, 31st, 30th, whatever month that is. And you'll get credit, and then going forward, July 1, 2016, it will be on a contract year basis. Yes, ma'am?
Okay, so if, up to this point, you maybe have been seeing some, perhaps, some Dean, if you've been on the POS, maybe you've seen some Dean doctors, some Mercy doctors, some doctors from someplace else as well, are they all going to get funneled down and that total deductible and out-of-pocket noted? And then, when you do choose one or the other, if you're choosing a Point of Service, and you're still keeping some of those doctors or a doctor that's not either Mercy or Dean, but you still need to see that doctor, is that going to then still go into the deductible? Or is the deductible then going to only be focused on whether you're seeing predominantly Dean or Mercy doctors?
That's a complex question. So let me, let me rephrase the question, is how's the deductible credit going to work? You've seen both Dean and Mercy providers to date. If you select the HMO product, your deduct, your in-network deductible will be credited. Your in-network co-insurance will be credited. So if you choose the HMO product, you'll be restricted to network providers, okay? Unless you get a referral, and it will be paid as if you were in network, if you get a referral. If you choose the Point of Service product, it will be credited to your in-network deductible, to in-network deductible. Going forward after July 1, if you see a non-contracted provider, it will go out of network, and the out-of-network deductible and co-insurance will apply to you. Unless you, unless, yeah, correct. Unless you received a referral from Dean and Mercy. Complex question, complex answer, right?
My husband and I both retired on June 7, 2013, from the school system of Jamesville. I have the little card here. We switched to Mercy, we have HMOs, I'm looking at all of this, do we still need to fill out the form?
Everyone needs to fill out a form if they want coverage or if they're waiving coverage.
Also, just a reminder, if you're an early retiree, you want to be looking at that last column on your sheet, not the other ones, because those would be for active employees. So some of you may have been looking, I think, at the active employees, and that's why you might have been confused about your deductibles. So the last column is for early retirees. That's the one that you had in your letter, I believe.
Isn't that the miniature? Okay, now that really just?
Oh, sorry about that. Sorry, sorry.
It's not there.
Excuse me, just a minute. I'm referring to this.
Yeah.
I'm referring to that colored one that came in your letter. So it says POS, PPO, early retirees only on the last.
So we don't have an HMO?
Yes, you do have the option of the HMO as well, but.
So Point of Service, so we said 500 is still?
Okay, let me help, I, anyway. Just to clarify, I guess, I hadn't seen this form before, so I, I can understand your questioning because it says Point of Service, PPO, for the early retirees. So to hopefully make it easy, the HMO plan for the retirees is all, is under this also. If you just look at the in-plan level, that's the HMO. So it would mirror that. So the HMO level would be the in-plan level with no non-plan level, and that would be all those same benefits. So it would be the $200 deductible, you know, the same out-of-pocket, anything that shows as in-planned on that Point of Service. I apologize for the confusion on that. The HMO should have been included in there also. So you would, you do have that HMO option, and if, if anyone needs clarification on that. But if you look at, the best way to do that is to look in your packets at your plan design. You will have three plan designs in your packets from both us and from both Mercy, and those plan designs are the HMO, the Point of Service, and the PPO. And then if you were to compare them, you will see that the HMO plan design is the same as the Point of Service in-plan benefits. So that's how you would want to look at that. Sorry for that confusion. Yep, yep.
Clarification. Yep, yep. Either my, I go to Dean Clinic.
Yep.
From Jamesville, and my wife goes to Boyd Clinic, so it's covered if we went with the Dean plan. One of us also goes to UW Hospital on a referral from Boyd Clinic. So if we chose the HMO as a Point of Service, would that impact any decisions made as to whether or not the person going to UW Hospital can still go?
Those are considered transition of care issues, and so we would want to speak with you personally about that, because it would have been a provider that would have referred you to UW for those services. And now coming to either Dean or Mercy, we would have to review that. We can't tell you one way or the other, what it would be 100% approved, but we would, it would certainly be, we'd call it a transition of care, something you would come to talk to me about or one of the Mercy representatives, and then we would get that process started for you for, to have that reviewed.
So the "we" is you.
Me and Rebecca. Me and Rebecca.
Just wanting to know who "we" was.
We, 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 yes.
At this time, I'm going to say that it's, we're probably ready for individual conversations. Again, if you're sitting at a table that says Mercy or Dean, and you're saying, I don't need to talk to that person, I need to talk to someone in the other provider, you don't have to stay at that table. That's one thing. The other thing is, if you already know what your plan is, please fill out the enrollment sheets. Some of you may end up just standing for a few moments until you see an empty spot at one of the tables.
Also, if anyone has any specific pharmacy questions, come see us. We do have our pharmacy director here, and he can answer those questions for you.
Thank you, everyone.